All right, I've lost control already for all eight of you in the crowd. Actually, there's not even eight. I'm gonna call the Finance Committee meeting to order for Monday, March 11th, 2019. The first resolution we have on tonight's agenda is a resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the Fetter's Run Stream Restoration and Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project. And considering by default, Mr. McDaniel, you're the only one here, so make us smarter.
I will allow Denise to inform us.
Okay. Denise, you're up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you have been out to the high school, you may or may not have noticed that there's a manhole in the middle of Fetter's Run. The manhole was not built in the middle of Fetter's Run. Fetter's Run moved to encompass the manhole. This is a serious problem because if there would be damage to that manhole, Fetter's Run would then drain into the sanitary sewer system, causing flooding and backups. And all of those issues, we don't want to deal with. This project will stabilize the stream, rebuild the bank where the manhole is located at, and put in the provisions that we do in a stream restoration project to keep the stream from eroding and this problem occurring again. This project is limited in the fact that we can't start work on it until the high school is out because of the location and the need for us to get into the stream at certain locations and we have to close the bike path. We also have to be done before the festival because of getting into the stream and closing the bike path and using parking areas and things like that.
Are you gonna be able to control the rain?
Probably not. And this year, yeah.
I don't like your odds, the way we've been going here.
So, this authorizes the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the project. We want to get the project advertised before the end of the month so that we can get the bids and process and give the contractor notice to proceed by the beginning of June.
Okay. Questions?
When did you guys discover that Fetter's Run actually moved to cover the manhole?
It has been moving and we have been working on this for about six months, getting the plans done and the various approvals that we need.
Whereabouts is this? If you can give us a geographical guess?
Right by the basketball court.
Oh, the lighted ones that are... Okay. All right. I know where that is.
It's in that neighborhood.
Okay.
That's the ones at the high school.
Yeah. So, is there anything you have to do with that to prevent it from continuing to alter its path, I guess? Or is that what we're gonna do?
That's a stream restoration project. So, we're gonna put in the vortex rocks and the weirs and riprap along the banks and those kinds of things that have been the issue with the stream moving.
Okay. Is that what that's called, riprap? Is that what those things are I saw on like by the bridge on Sixth Avenue at Land Rico Park?
Riprap is actually the great big rock that you see.
The ones that have the holes in them, look like squares?
No, that's...
I wondered what those were. They look cool.
Articulated block mats.
There you go.
There we go.
Vegetation you can grow through.
Yeah.
It's to enhance some vegetation.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Any other questions about this particular project? What's our timing on this?
I think we're looking at two readings.
Okay. Who's gonna sponsor and who's gonna second? Will your running mates be back?
I understand they will be back.
So, we're gonna let Jerry sponsor or you wanna sponsor?
I will be going next meeting.
Jerry's supposed to be back.
Hey, I went on the Water Committee 'cause... Okay, so...
They're crating water.
Jerry and then John, right? So, Mr. Woodard will sponsor and Mr. Bowles will second. Any further questions? We'll go two readings on 3919. Very good. Stay close, folks. Next item I have is Resolution 4019. That's a resolution to appropriate from the Sanitation Fund 605 to purchase composting equipment. This is coming through Service, Mrs. Bobbitt.
Thank you very much, Tom. I think Mr. Burrows is in the back of the room. He explained this to us in our service meeting the other day, but I'd rather him come to the podium and just because he needs to come to the podium.
Hey, can you do it in 20 seconds like you did the 20-second slideshow?
I can try. In the process of composting and yard waste, I talked to the EPA about making some mulch and they would prefer the stuff be ground up back behind the transfer station. So, I went on a quest to... It's about $10,000 a week to rent the horizontal grinders and grind the stuff up. I found a tub grinder for $90,000. I talked to Paul and the mayor about it and I was gonna go to the Solid Waste District and ask for a grant. Well, Paul called the lady Carol Phillips up in the Solid Waste District and they happened to have a tub grinder, a chipper, and a John Deere front loader, a John Deere loader. And the upshot of it is, they gave it to us. And it's about 100... If we had it to sell, it'd be about $150,000, $175,000 worth of equipment. It all needs some repair. The John Deere loader's done. My mechanic and my guys have repaired the John Deere loader. It's gonna be about $60,000. That's worst-case scenario, about $60,000 to rebuild this tub grinder. We did not budget for this and I'm asking to budget the money to fix this equipment and then we can start grinding the stuff ourselves.
Can I ask you a quick question? So, by investing this much money in this, I mean, is it, I guess, is it like a rebuild? What kind of life expectancy would you expect to have?
I'm hoping for 10 years or more. The beauty of the deal that Paul and I made is the equipment belongs to the city. The Solid Waste District usually keeps some kind of control and tells us what we can do with it, what we can't do with it. I would not agree to that. If we're gonna invest $60,000, then this stuff needs to belong to the city. And that's why if we decide this tub grinder isn't big enough, instead of turning it back into Solid Waste District, we can trade it in. We can sell it. The same with the chipper.
Would you expect it to have more value than the $60,000 if, once it's operational?
Oh, yes, sir. We're looking at 175, 150 to 175,000. The cheapest tub grinder I could find was a 1994 that had been rebuilt, which is what we're doing with this one, and they wanted $80,000 for it. We have a 2004, a 10-year newer one, that we're gonna have up and running for around $40,000. That's labor and parts and that's a complete rebuild.
Okay. All right. Yeah, Mrs. Bobbitt.
Excuse me. Bill, will you explain to the public and the city council why we need, you know, why we need to compost and the fees that we're facing if we're hauling trash or hauling...
The good example is if we compost all this, make it into mulch, the Parks Department will have free mulch to do their trails with. It'll save them a lot of money that they can... The Mount Pleasant Trail, the Trails Alley Park, they can have it all. We save $40 a ton by separating this out and chipping it up ourselves. Our price for dumping went from $24.86 to $34.86 this month, this year, to dispose of trash, plus we have a $4.75 tipping fee for everything we run across the scales at the transfer station. We have 570 tons of yard waste that we collected from the months of October through December and we saved $24,000 in dumping fees. So, the...
Okay. I wanna keep moving on here. Wait a second. See if there's any other questions first. Anyone have any other questions?
Oh, I thought you meant you want me out of here.
No! We just gotta keep moving on here. We got a lot to do tonight. Any other questions for Mr. Burrows? Mel, what's your pleasure on this piece?
Three readings will be fine.
And your second?
Becky?
Yes.
Okay. So, we'll go three readings on 4019 with Mr. Tina as the second. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. The next item I have is 4119 and that is a resolution... It is a resolution. Authorizing the Service Safety Director to waive competitive bidding for the Pioneer Alley Storm Sewer Replacement Project coming through water pollution. Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, again, like Mrs. Cruz did, it's also talking better.
Okay. You know, sometimes if I didn't have bad luck, I wouldn't have any luck at all. Pioneer Alley is located south of Mulberry and east of Sherman Avenue on the west side over by where Lancaster Electroplating used to be. Two weeks ago, LDOT went out and repaired a sinkhole and as they were repairing the sinkhole, what they found was a major section of the storm sewer was gone from about 11:00 to 1:00 at the top of this pipe. Greg then came and talked to me. We had the storm sewer videotaped and he found a number of very frightening things down there. In fact, there's one place, there's a hole you can look up and see the bottom of the alley paving. So, it's definitely a storm sewer that needs some replacement. We're concerned, we're keeping our fingers crossed that we're not going to have additional cavins on that line. The line sits... It's a 24-inch clay pipe that's 92 years old. It sits between a 48-inch sewer, storm sewer, and a private high-pressure gas line in Pioneer Alley, so in this very narrow space. That eliminated any non-digging alternatives we had. We can't lose any capacity in the pipe. It's already at capacity. We can't do a slipline, cast-in-place, pipelining. We can't do a pipe bursting because of the high-pressure gas line, so our only option is to actually dig it up. ODOT has already let the contract for the State Route 188 paving project. The pre-bid meeting is tomorrow. The preliminary schedule we have from ODOT is the contractor will be on-site next month starting curb and curb ramp work. He expects to be paving by the end of May, beginning of June. So, I now have a timing issue. I have to get across 188 before the ODOT contractor gets into this. So, the sewer replacement is under design. I didn't want to do one where we just bring a contractor out and say, "Replace the line from here to here" because of the issues with the other two lines that are next to it. So, what we plan to do is have plans done by next week. Greg's going to send it out to contractors and get quotes. So, what we'd like to do is waive competitive bidding based on the quotes that Greg gets and then just enter into a contract and get the work started. I put this legislation in tonight so you could have two readings on it because that's what Jerry prefers. This is just a placeholder and we will have quotes and actual numbers at the next meeting.
Okay. Questions? This is Downer.
Just from general information, because this sounds like it's a very old pipe, what kind of preventative stuff are you guys doing from a citywide perspective to make sure that this isn't happening anywhere else? I mean, are you inspecting the sewers regularly? What happens?
We are. And Greg and I have prioritized sewers by size and age. The problem is, is that as soon as we go into a sewer, we find a problem. So, we had prioritized the 96-inch line that comes out of the fairgrounds, which is part of the sewer lining project this year, and we had that video inspected, found a number of pieces of work we had to do on that, which took our budget for this year. So, we have prioritized those. We're getting into them. We're doing video inspections, seeing what we can repair. Greg said normally he would've tried to repair this, but again, narrow space, gas line, storm sewer, he said he just did not want to do this. So, yes, we are starting a preventative maintenance program. It's just we've got a lot of catch-up to do.
And when did you start the preventative maintenance program? How long have you been doing it?
We prioritized last year. So, we started last year on the sewer line coming from the fairgrounds, which is bigger and older.
Okay. Maybe I'm not asking my question the way I'm...
Should we be doing more preventative maintenance?
Yeah, that's my question.
Yes. We have not had the manpower or the money to do it. So, as we've cleared up drainage problems, we've started to switch over from crisis management like this into preventative maintenance.
Sounds like we're still in a lot of crisis management rather than preventative maintenance.
We are still in crisis management.
I think, didn't the stormwater program start in '03, '04?
'04.
I know it was passed in '03 'cause I was sitting out there, but I'm not sure when it started or when you started collecting money and you pretty much spent every money, all the money every year on storm... It's one of the programs which I think is good because if you look at how much we collected and how much we actually spent on projects, it's really, you know, we've spent most of it on projects, not really on people and anything else. Yeah, Mrs. Tina, I'm sorry.
I wouldn't ask a question of, so, what you've described, how bad it is, should we wait two readings or should we suspend on this? Because from what you're saying, it's pretty serious, so...
Well, I don't have any quotes, so I can't give you exact numbers. I've put a number, an estimated number in there, so I prefer to bring it back. We're also still developing the plans, so even if you suspended tonight, I couldn't move any faster than next meeting.
And the number could go higher than what we have.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, so, yeah, I appreciate the, you know, the heads up and going to. Further questions?
Just one quick...
Yeah, sure. Mrs. Bobbitt.
So, how close do you think your bid of the $300,000 is? I know, you can't, you don't know what they're gonna...
You know, this bidding season right now, numbers have gone all over the place and we're hoping we can find three contractors that will fit us into their schedule.
Okay. So, you will go out to three contractors?
Yes.
'Cause, you know, usually anything this amount. Okay.
We hope she's a bad guesser, Melody.
I hope you're a bad guesser.
If I had no bad luck, I'd have no luck at all.
See, I don't like how that's gonna sound next, in two weeks, so, anyway. All right. Further questions? Seeing none, we'll go two readings with Mr. Woodard sponsor, Mr. Bowles the second.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. All right. Moving on. Next item we have is Resolution 40219. A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the Mon Hawk Drive culvert replacement project.
Once again, we have Stormwater Manager Cruz to explain this to us.
Okay. I lied. I do have some good luck. Last fall, we applied for a state capital improvement grant to replace the Mon Hank Drive culvert. It's an 84-inch culvert. It's got sandstone head wall and end walls that have been shifting and deteriorating. The pipe itself was installed in two pieces, so it's old and deteriorating. So, this was our number-one culvert for replacement. We have recently learned that we've been recommended out of the district to the state to award the grant on this project. When we wrote the grant, we told them that we would be ready to enter into contracts when we received the grant paperwork in July. So, this just gets us into the bidding process, so we'll have things in order in July and this can go through readings.
Any questions on this piece? What was the grant? What was our portion of the...
We applied for just a tad over $168,000, which we're receiving. It was a 74-26 local match on this.
Okay. Very good. All right. So, three readings and same sponsors? Mr. Woodard, Mr. Bowles? Or do you wanna be part of this now?
I can second it.
Okay.
Mr. Woodard will sponsor.
So, Mr. Woodard to sponsor, Mr. McDaniel to second. All right. Thank you. So, we'll go three readings on 40219. Next item is 4319. That's a resolution authorizing the waiver of Section, not to be an ampersand, but Section 7 of the November 2002 agreement between the city and the CIC for infrastructure repayment pursuant to the sale of 20 acres of land in Rock Mill Phase 2 for construction of Project GWN. This is coming through economic development. Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Chairman Stodden. This is in regards to a discussion we had in executive session. I'd like either Mr. Pettit, would you discuss that with us, please?
This is still Project GWN that we're discussing here. We cannot disclose who that company is at this point, but we are very close. We've actually started work on the agreement between the CIC and the company. The company is moving forward quickly and we have another piece of legislation on here tonight in regards to this. But as part of the CIC being the owners of the Rock Mill land, there is an agreement with the city for portions of that to be paid back. In the interest of economic development and for us to get this project, we had to do some things with the CIC that would provide for almost no cost to the company for the land portion. So, before the CIC can enter into that agreement with the company, we have to, or we need the resolution that you're foregoing any of that agreement specifically for just the 20 acres, approximately 20 acres that Project GWN would be taking.
This is, I believe, if the email I recall from the Law Director Day, you guys were asked for suspension on that?
Yes.
You wanted suspension on that?
So, let me ask a question, Mike. What, is there any other particular, specific information you're allowed to share at this time?
Phase 1 is 300 jobs.
Okay.
It is in the automotive realm. It's a very large parent company, international company, and their expectations are quite large on employment in Phases 2 and 3.
Okay. Very cryptic, but that's helpful, I think, sitting around the table. Now, you're asking for suspension tonight. Are there questions around the table about any of this? Mr. Graff?
Yeah. Obviously, there's been a cost because that money comes back from the CIC to pay for the infrastructure that's put into the industrial park. I tend to have a problem with voting to waive that when I don't even know who it is. Not that the general public needs to know who it is, but I feel like that's kind of voting blindly and it's not quite enough information for me to go by.
Okay.
Or suspension.
Well, let me ask a question. If we went into executive session to talk about specifics, are we still covered by the NDA where you could not disclose that?
I am still under the NDA and the mayor is as well.
Okay.
I can't disclose.
No, it's, you know what? It's what it is and we will ask for a vote tonight and the vote will go the way the vote goes.
If the vote goes no, we need to have an executive session for sure because we have got to get this deal done ASAP, this and the second piece of legislation. So, if there's any question, then we need an executive session.
Well, I understand, but if you can't disclose anything different...
Let's have the executive session.
Okay. We will do that at the end of Finance?
Perfect.
You got it. All right. Who is, Don, who is the second on this?
Mrs. Downer, will you second that?
Yep.
Okay. And we're asking for suspension on 4319. We will, Law Director Allen, would you get some verbiage?
I got it.
Oh, you got it? Okay. Good. All right. Very good. So, we will have an executive session at the end on 4319. Next item I have is 40... 43 on there, 40, so... 42. Look at that.
Yeah, you got it on the side.
All right. Now, this is, I just have a, I had the wrong number. My numbering's off by one. Holy moly. All right. So, anyway, the next resolution is 44. I call it the second number 43 on the agenda. But what it is, it's a resolution creating revenue and expense budgets for the Lancaster Clean Up, Lancaster Glass Cleanup Cork Grant. This is coming through Finance, but Auditor Nettles, who loves to create these revenue and expense budgets, will tell us why, what, where, when, and how.
This one is for the Lancaster Cork Grant that there's unused grant monies that we have yet to pull. I don't hopefully knock on wood anticipating having any withdrawals, but just since the grant itself isn't officially closed, I wanted to set the budget just in case there was a draw that needed and if hopefully we're done with it, if you have any care, we'll sign off on it. If it's not needed, I'll close it out for cleanup. So, I just wanted to protect in case we have a draw for contract.
And then this also basically incorporates the then and now, which would allow us to proceed forward should we have that condition. So, we're just hedging right now to make sure that if we need it, we have it. If we don't, we don't.
I just, yeah, wanna make sure and just cover all bases just...
You see, your timing is no rush?
Nope, three readings.
All right. We'll go three readings. Mr. McDaniel, you're actually the second on that one. It's an even...
Okay. Thank you.
It's an even resolution. So, we'll go three readings on 4419. Next item I have is 4519 and that's a no. That's not mine. Move on to 46. 4619, which on your agenda says 44. My apologies yet again. And that's a resolution to appropriate from the 320 Capital Improvement Account. This is coming from Finance. It's specific to Project GWN. Mr. Pettit, I will defer to you for a little more information.
Okay. First off, I'll let you know that we do have a six, what's called a 629 grant from the state of Ohio to help with this project. We've been granted over $1.15 million for road improvements. The 629 grant will only do road-type projects. We do not cover, they do not cover utilities expansion. So, with the 629 grant, we do need to, and the timing of Project GWN, we need to get quickly with engineering, the road improvements, the geotechnical work for the box culvert installation, and traffic study. Mitch, there's one more, right?
Turn lane.
Turn lane, yes. So, all that engineering to be done. This company wants to be in operation December 1st, so we are on a very, very tight timeframe. And we have some things in the works for a second project that will be replacing this monies, but we have to have the monies appropriated to move forward. But we'll be under contract for another project. Expectations are in 45 days to close and so the monies would go back from that project back into the 320 if we even pull anything of it out.
It's just a way of appropriating money so we have it available so you can actually write purchase orders.
So, we can get going.
Sure. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I would just like to clarify that, but we have to write purchase orders for engineers. The engineers are ready to start 7:30 tomorrow morning on this project. We are under some very strict timeframes. So, we need an account to appropriate the fees for the engineer so they can write a purchase order. The mayor may not ever have to disburse the monies in 320, but if we do, it will be reflected by the future past work that we have done.
Sure. And that's not like, by future means sometime probably in this year.
Yeah.
It'd be...
Like in a couple of months.
Yeah. We'll be made whole on every dollar, so it's, we're just basically using it as an appropriation account.
And those funds may be coming before we ever get a bill from the engineers, but we need to write the purchase order so they can get started.
Unfortunately, the state of Ohio nor will the auditor let you do that without an appropriated catch source, am I right?
Don't get me started.
Okay. So, we'll ask for suspension on this night. Are there further questions on this?
I will add that the Anchor Avenue area will, the engineering for that road will be done in-house and because those roads are already pretty much degraded in the original and then we will be doing in-house water extension as well.
Okay. Very good. All right. So, we will suspend on, or ask for suspension on 4619 and the second, Mr. McDaniel, is again you. I'm sorry?
No, we missed 45. We went from 44 to 47.
Yeah, 45 down here. That's from Mr....
Oh, got it.
I had to give Mr. Rule something to do tonight. Next item I have on tonight, I'd say I'm a mess tonight. Next item I have on tonight's agenda is Ordinance 519 and that's an ordinance to sell bonds specific to the purchase of natural gas in alignment with the framework of the city's prepay gas agreement. I took all that paragraph and made it that sentence, so, but I'm going to defer again to Mr. Pettit about the prepay program and if you'll enlighten us, Mike, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, well, pretty much the team is here with Randall and Bob as well as a kind of negotiating team, and certainly the mayor is heavily involved as well. We do have a little PowerPoint presentation going on for you. That kind of takes a little bit of the history of the prepay and then brings us up to date of where we are and why we're doing what we're doing. Okay, in 2006, the Port Authority was created. Right after that, we started looking at a prepaid transaction. We first looked at Texas MuniGas, and then Texas MuniGas is a consortium of munis. It's not a single issuer, but you have to rely on the transaction that they do for you versus you creating your own. Lancaster is large enough to do one by themselves, and the technicalities in the MuniGas left us with some considerable questions as we dove into the transaction itself, and we chose not to go that route. So in 2008, we were a single issuer deal, and that was about a $348 million bond transaction to, in 2008 that we did. In 2010, we had a little problem. In the original deal, there's a lot of things built into it to protect us and to protect all the parties involved. So in 2010, our swap provider was BP, and they had to be changed out due to their credit rating after the Deepwater Horizon spill. So they took a little bit of a dive, and they're certainly back up now and no issues there, but we had to switch out to JP Chase Morgan, and so that cost us a penny or two on our discount. In 2013, we were notified by RBC that concerning what's called a material adverse condition, the BP spill would have been a material adverse condition if we had not replaced them, and again, it's a protection measure. This one being notified by RBC in 2013 is because the Canadian bank regulators came in and said, because this deal is very heavily, a lot of swaps and derivatives in it, that the banking regulatory agency for Canada come back and said, look, with all these derivatives, we want more cash to set aside against this bond transaction, and if they do that, the money's sitting there not making money, and it's an adverse position for RBC. And so they come up with this, a secondary program called an FRN bond, and in 2014, then we issued a five-year FRN bond with the discount reduced again, but still sizable. So here we are in 2019 with the current refunding, and that's for approximately five years. We're going to stretch it out as much as we can, but the, we might get five and a half or six, I'm not sure. So the revenues to date, Lancaster has realized a new revenue of over $8.4 million out of this transaction. So that's at no taxpayers' expense, no gas rate payer's expense. The financial transaction that this is creates this revenue. The LPA bond rating, that's a big A, little a, two, instead of a big A, big A, two. Moody's rating. Again, in 2018, the original transaction was 348 million. Just so you know, I'm not sure if you are aware of the current board members, but it's Zach Delone as chairman, Rick Wilkins, vice chair, secretary is Ron Burris, and then we have Dean D. Roth and Howard Osball, treasurer is Bob Wolfinger, and the executive director is myself. For the derivative instruments, the interest rate swap is, this deal is very complicated, and I don't, I'm more on the physical side than the financial side, but the LPA borrows at a variable rate and swaps for a fixed rate. RBC is the interest rate provider, and the interest rates are based on a SIFMA index. A SIFMA index is the U.S. Trade Group, SIFMA. It's a security firms, basically Security Industrial Financial Market Association. So it's a large trade group of the largest security firms, banks, and asset management firms in the U.S. Then you have the commodity rate swap, which LPA purchases at a floating price and swaps for a fixed price, and the counterparties are RBC, BP, and JP Chase Morgan. We do have in the mix there Wells Fargo, who is the trustee. Wells Fargo just handles all the different transactions to make sure everything is right and the flow of money is correct and get who gets what and by the agreement. The last slide here is the timing. So the final discount can fluctuate dramatically. Back, if we had been back in the fall of, or late winter of 2018, the market conditions were not very good and were not favorable to pull the trigger. But based on the current market situation, we're in very good position, and that's why we're been pushing through for timing. We are looking at adding on volumes. You know, the original deal was 30 years. That was 10 years ago, and so the larger the transaction, the more discount we can get. So if we add some volumes of turning this kind of back into a 30-year deal without impacting the current 20 years that are left. Back in 2008, when we did this deal, the natural gas market was much higher than it is today. That was prior to shale being prevalent. And market, just to give you an example, February of 2019 traded at 2.85. Is that right, Melody? 2.9, 2.85? And so back when we did the deal, February of 2019 was trading for over 11 bucks. So we were very fortunate in the time when we did the transaction because the gas prices were so high, it made the transaction bigger in dollar amount as far as the bond goes. So it was a big plus in our favor. So we don't want to disturb that current 20 years that's left, and we have the attorneys looking at adding 10 years on the backside to make this transaction bigger. So there are some determinants and the components. The interest rate, RBC is willing to pay, and that's components are the general interest rates reflected by LIBOR. LIBOR is the London Interbank Offered Rate, and that's interest rate average calculated from estimates submitted by leading banks in London. So it's a, that's kind of the borrowing rate that banks pay each other. So the LIBOR rates and the swap rates, the RBC's alternative cost of funding, as expressed by a spread of that LIBOR rates, and any other adjustments negotiated with RBC in advance of the bond pricing and the size of the bond transaction. So it's a lot of different determinants, very technical. I apologize, I can't give you 100% of what the LIBOR does and what the SIFMA does, but it's, it creates money. Oh, that's a flow, that is a kind of a flow of monies, and you see the Lancaster Port Authority being right in there. You've got gas volumes coming from RBC, you've got JP Chase Morgan up there in the commodity swap, the city of Lancaster taking those gas volumes, and then the bondholders and the cost of issuance below. Custodial agreement would be with Wells Fargo.
Okay, are we done? Okay, first of all, Randall, if you're driving that, if you'll make sure that the clerk gets a copy of this for the financing minutes, that would be great. Many of you weren't around for the prepay agreement, but as you saw, it has generated $8.4 million for the Lancaster Port Authority, and it used to create some for even the general fund. You're looking at me like you want me to say something or call on you? So anyway, our timing on this, I, do we need to pass this tonight?
We need suspension on this, yes.
This is what we talked about a couple of weeks ago, or maybe four weeks ago?
Yes, the reality of it is is that everybody believes that the market may be in the best position for this deal by the end of this month, so we're looking to get basically everything in line, get our documents in line, so basically, we're ready to pull the trigger as we watch the market and see where the best discount presents itself for us.
So in theory, we're basically keeping the 20 years the same as of our original agreement. We're just adding the quantity of supply of the next 10 years to give us a more favorable return, right?
Yes.
In theory, is that what that's all about?
Correct. And as you look at the futures market, that 2030, yeah, the 2038 to 2049 is trading in the $5 range, where before it would have been over 15 bucks in 2008. So that's what shale did for you, so.
This is about it?
How many do we need to pass on?
Seven.
Because you work for JP Morgan, so you won't be able to vote on it, so can we get it passed?
You don't know that.
She could vote to suspend no matter what.
Oh, vote to suspend.
And we can discuss the other issue at the.
Okay, I'm just asking. Don't jump down my aisle.
No, you were actually saying, but she's already ready to have a conversation with the law director first, okay? So to get some guidance on that.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure that we could.
All right, very good. Other questions on this? Yes, President Oul.
I think it's just worth reiterating that while we're working to suspend tonight, that we've talked about this four weeks ago.
Correct.
We've talked about this last week, or two weeks ago at our meeting prior, and so this isn't new information, it's just that we need to move it along now that we've spoken about it a couple of times.
Okay.
The other thing I would just add to this or whatever, out of these agreements, and I'd sent out an email to all of you, but the primary things, of course, with this piece of legislation on the city side would be, because you're purchasing this gas that the port is buying from RBC, but as you can see in the ordinance, it's authorizing preliminary official statement, an official statement which helps with regard to the bonding and the rating. The other things that I wanted to say is, it looks to me like in a review of documents and everything, that there's really three documents that the city, the mayor would be involved in signing on behalf of the city, which is amendment to the natural gas supply agreement, if we do in fact increase the volumes or whatever the gas, the bond purchase agreement, and then the continuing disclosure certificate. So about three documents that the mayor would be signing on behalf of the city. Don't hold me that exact number, but then you look on the port side, and there's about 15 different documents.
I will add that by adding on those volumes on the backside, it, the current, with the current market, the expectations are additional about 10 cents on top of the other discount, which over a period of five years, that creates about a million bucks.
Wow.
So.
And that money is all going to Lancaster Port Authority for economic development, correct?
Yes, it does, and we're currently receiving about $587,000 a year.
Okay. Questions? All right, so Mrs. Downhour, you'll second that. I will, I will be your, I'll sponsor the legislation. All right, do we have any departmental updates this evening?
I canceled one of them that was assigned. I don't know if there's someone else coming up.
There aren't, so we're going to move on to President Oul for tonight's meeting prep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one resolution to address, 4519, a resolution approving the application placement of farmland agricultural district coming through, Law, Mr. Graff.
And I'm going to defer to Law Director Olin, since I haven't seen this in a meeting either.
Law Director Olin.
Thank you. This is, so this individual has applied for, to put about 600 acres in agricultural district. This is the first time I've seen one of these, but basically, if any portion of the property under the Higher Revised Code, if any portion of the property that they're seeking to put in the agricultural district falls within a municipality, then the legislative authority of that municipality has an opportunity basically to approve, reject, or modify the application request, and then send that, the action, legislative action from here to the county auditor. So, but the ORC sets forth that we've got some sort of tight timing on this. I can go a full three readings, but we need to have a preliminary, a public hearing on the issue, at which point the applicant would be here to answer for questions for council, typical of our public hearings. We're going to have to do that the next meeting because it has to be within 30 days of the application date, and then, of course, the vote can go to the third reading, which would be in April, April 8th.
Okay. Do you want to set your, well, you can't set your public hearing, finance can.
It's actually set as long as council approves that. I'm sorry, I didn't know if you were looking at.
I was looking at both of you, so.
It is ready to go to the newspapers tomorrow upon a council's approval.
So we're setting for the next meeting for the public hearing?
Correct. That will give me time to notify the property owner via certified mail.
Okay. You're second on this, Mr. Graff?
Mr. Scanover.
Okay, very good. Mr. Oul, anything else? I did take over for Apple.
I'll ride ahead, sir.
It's been one of those days.
All right.
All right, so Mrs. Downhour, would you please put us into executive session?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to convene into executive session to consider confidential information related to the marketing plans, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance involving public infrastructure improvements, and that this executive session is necessary to protect the interests of the applicant or the possible investment or expenditure of public funds to be made in connection with the economic development project pursuant to a Higher Revised Code, Section 121 dot 22G8. The executive session should include the following: council president, council members, law director, mayor, auditor, service safety director, treasurer, and economic development director, Mike Pettit.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session, and I need a vote of a yes from Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Daniel, and I also vote yes, we are in an executive session.
Almost everyone needs a car to get from point A to point B, and many families have two or more cars. At Carriage Company, located at 1031 North Memorial Drive in Lancaster, we specialize in hard-to-find used cars. Due to the recent success of the new car market, there is a large inventory of used cars available for resale. We can help you find exactly what you're looking for. With over 15 years at this location and 27 years' experience in the business, we are the best place to go to find your next car, truck, van, or SUV. As a member of the Better Business Bureau, we are a Carfax Advantage dealer and offer great financing rates through a local area bank with warranties available on most vehicles. We know your time is valuable, so we take special pride in making sure that you get what you came for at a price that you can afford.
Come into Carriage Company and check out our sweet deals.
Stop by today and let us help you, or visit us online at carriagecompany.com. Stop by today and let us help you, or visit us online at CarriageCompany.com.
The Frank E. Smith Funeral Home and Crematory in Lancaster, and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at 740-653-0652. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, 405 North Columbus Street in Lancaster, or 207 South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
There is no place like Lancaster, Ohio, and Fairfield County, and like you, I am proud to call them home. As a longtime resident of Lancaster and graduate of Lancaster High School, this community is important to me, and I want to provide superior customer service, professionalism, integrity, and honesty at the Connor Insurance Agency. I am committed to supporting local programs and projects through my volunteer work and board membership with several organizations. It has been a great honor to work with all the first responders throughout Lancaster, Fairfield County, and the state of Ohio to put on Kids &amp; Cops Day, to be a part of Shop with a Cop alongside Lancaster Police Department and JFS, and to help Lancaster Public Education Foundation raise funds to support our local public schools and teachers. These men and women work hard to protect and support our community, and I would like to take this moment to say thank you for all they do. My goal as a business owner and insurance agent is to provide my clients with the most appropriate services and coverage for their needs at a competitive rate. As an independent agent, I have several carriers to choose from, so I can customize your insurance coverage to fit your needs and desires. I strive to make sure there are no gaps in your coverage that could be harmful, and just as important, that you are not overinsured. I look forward to serving your insurance needs now and in the future. At Connor Insurance, we are here to serve you by protecting what is important to you. Please contact my office at 740-654-2848 for a full list of services and carriers, or visit my website, ConnorInsuranceAgency.com.
direct us as we go about serving as best we can the citizens of Lancaster. We ask for your continued blessings upon us and each resident within the city, in Jesus' name, amen. I hereby call this meeting of Lancaster City Council to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Members of council administration, please make sure your microphones are on, please call the roll.
Mr. Bous, Mrs. Bobbitt?
Here.
Mrs. Downhour?
Here.
Mr. Graff?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Scoonover?
Here.
Mr. Steiner?
Here.
Mr. Woodard?
Let the record reflect that seven of nine members are in attendance tonight, Ms. Downhour?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mr. Woodard from tonight's meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion to excuse Mr. Woodard from tonight's meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Ms. Downhour, would you have another motion this evening, or?
No, I do not.
Okay, move along then. Reading and disposing of the journal.
We have an excuse Mr. Bous, or we're not excusing him on...
I'd be happy to accept a motion.
Well, make a motion to excuse him.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Is there any?
Ms. Downhour?
Um, is Mr. Bous go to Florida during the winter months, is that why he does not attend council? Does anyone know?
It is my understanding that, yes, indeed, Mr. Bous is in Florida. We had had some communication wherein he suggested that he would be gone for two meetings. I think we have passed that particular milestone, and so I've not heard from him, I do not know if anyone else. Clerk, have you heard from Mr. Bous?
I've received an email from him, which I would read into the minutes, stating that he is still out of town and would not be here for the meeting, and asked that I let the safety committee know, well, knowing that Mr. Woodard would not be back for the safety committee, I contacted Mr. Bous and let him know also that Mr. Woodard is out, that I would need to cancel it, because there wouldn't be a quorum, so he told me to go ahead, and that's all I have.
So, to cancel that meeting?
Yes, and he would not be here this evening.
Okay.
And how many, I'm sorry, how many meetings has he missed during his two-year term?
Uh, in 2018, he missed three, and in 2019, counting tonight, it will be four.
We'll need order from the gallery, thank you. Is there other discussion? Ms. Teener?
I do not know, I'm just asking this question, um, is there a, I don't know, if you miss so many meetings in a row, is there a, um, I don't know if there's rules for that, if you miss so many in a row, I don't, I just don't know, I just, because I just realized, because I thought he'd be back in March, so...
So, here's what I can tell you, our rules speak to attendance at special meetings, they do not speak to it, so then we must look to the Ohio Revised Code, which says that within a two-year period, a council member may, must attend three-fifths of all meetings. So, at that point, when you add all our meetings up, it would look like 17 he would have to miss in order to be removed per ORC. Yes, Mr. Stone?
So, your ability to compel attendance is only for special meetings?
When you read our rules, that it specifically states special meetings, it may be in order for the Standing Committee on Law to take a look at our rules and potentially make revisions, should we want to refer that to them.
Yeah, I think we should make that referral, because, I mean, you're elected to serve, and you need to be here and serve.
Yes, and so, yeah, Mr. Woodard?
I was just gonna say that what you said is absolutely correct with the three-fifths and 17th meetings, I just want you all to understand that if you excuse someone from a meeting by motion and a vote, that does not count towards that number.
We suspected that, but at the end of the day, you know, we need rules going forward, I mean, Mr. Bous is not running for reelection, but I think we need to create rules, and I apologize for not being recognized.
Go ahead.
We need to actually have rules in our, in our ordinance that basically deals with this, and we'll know better when we see that we potentially have a problem.
Yeah, we can fix that up.
Thank you.
Do we need any official motion to refer to law, or we can just ask the chairman to take it up?
Yeah, just ask the chairman.
So, Mr. Graff will ask that you do that and make a report back to city council regarding changes to requirements for attendance at meetings. Okay, further discussion on the motion to excuse Mr. Bous? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
The motion to excuse Mr. Bous fails, thank you very much. Are there reports, oh, we need to dispose of the journal, hey, yes, thank you very much. Reading and disposing of the journal?
I'd like to present the regular meeting minutes dated February 25, 2019.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the journal. All, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. So, there are reports of city officials?
There are. Email dated February 27, 2019, regarding the notice of funding availability submitted by Mary Jo Smith, Executive Director of Community Development Department. Email dated February 28, 2019, regarding state of the city, submitted by President Oul. Email dated March 7, 2019, regarding service committee agenda, submitted by Mrs. Bobbitt. Email dated March 8, 2019, regarding cancellation of the safety committee meeting, submitted by Mr. Bous. Email dated March 11, 2019, regarding legislation for tonight, submitted by Stormwater Director Denise Cruz, and finally, an email dated March 11, 2019, regarding vacation, submitted by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports to city officials.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports to city officials. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Are there any communications?
There is one, email dated March 7, 2019, regarding letter and supporting documents regarding electronic monitoring, submitted by Carrie Brown from Fairfield County Commissioner's Office, and I apologize, I did not write her title down.
She's a county administrator.
County administrator.
Yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the communications.
Second.
Of a motion and a second to receive and file communications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Tonight, we continue our series on great things happening in Lancaster by inviting another guest to the podium. I will yield to Councilwoman Teener to introduce our guest this evening.
Yes, I'm introducing Becky Shade, she is with the Director of the Fairfield County District Library, I've known her for many years, I think through two kids, I think, and my oldest is 36, so the other one's 17, so I've known you for a while. But she's here today to talk about teen programs at the library.
Very good, thank you for being here.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity. I want to talk about a few things, the library offers a lot of services to our community, I'm going to speak specifically to the things we offer to teens. We passed out a copy of the library's keywords, which is our newsletter, that lists all of the programs available in the spring quarter, and also a zine that says teen spring programs, and those are programs specifically for teens. The first thing I wanted to mention is our teen room refresh, we have a room that's dedicated to teen services at the main library, we were recently able to give this a new coat of paint, including a chalkboard wall that allows us to advertise programs to teens, as well as interact with them through things like a question of the day, where they can write their answers on there. We also have new outlets installed in this room, previous to this, we had one electrical outlet in this space, which does not work for teens, so we were excited to add five additional outlets, that all have USB capability for plugging in. We got some new shelves in this area, which allowed us to expand our teen collection, and some new furniture, new tables and chairs, that can be configured in multiple ways, they're on casters, so they're easy to move, teens can work together in small groups, work together in larger groups in the teen room, and that's been probably in service for about a month now, and already staff is noticing more teens at the library in that room, working together. It is true, if you build it, they will come, so we are excited about that. One of the programs we have coming up is an open house on Sunday, March 17, we invite everyone in the community to check out this new space in the teen room, we'll be having some snacks and some programming available that day, so if you're available, I'd invite you to come on the 17th to see that, or at any time when the library's open, of course, I'd be happy to show you the teen room. Some upcoming programs we have for teens, like all programs at the library, these are free, we have a making zine program, a zine, it's short for magazine, like the small brochure you have in front of you, teens can use that as a format for whatever they are a fan of, can make their own and actually distribute them through the library, which is, has been a great program we've done in the past, that's coming up on March 26 at 6:00 PM. The last program I wanted to talk about is our teen volunteer program at the library. Last summer was the first time we did that, and we had about 20 teens volunteer for us over the course of the summer, they were a huge help, they helped prepare materials for programs, helped, had an extra set of hands at children's programs, and even did things like help us decorate for our Harry Potter programs that we did last summer. So, we could not have done that without the hours that teen volunteers put in. We are planning to do that again for this summer, and coming up, I believe it is May 16 at 6:30, we're gonna have a meeting for anyone who wishes to volunteer, they can go through a short training, there's an application on the library's website, teens can download that and make sure their parents sign off on it, and can get a volunteer to help at the library this summer, so it was pretty exciting. Any questions? Be happy to answer any questions.
Very good, anyone have questions for Becky?
Again, thank you for the opportunity to present, and I would welcome all of you at the library.
Thank you very much for being here, we appreciate you and your work, the library is a phenomenal asset here in Lancaster and across Fairfield County, so thank you for all you do, let's show her our appreciation for being here tonight. Thank you so much. Are there any petitions and memorials?
There are none to be presented.
During this time in our meeting, we set time aside for voters and taxpayers of Lancaster to address Lancaster City Council on any item, issue, or concern that you would like. If you would like to address Lancaster City Council tonight, we invite you to come forward, sign in at the podium with your name and address, and then state the same for the record. Please note that during this time, city council members will not respond to you, but may choose to do so at a later portion of tonight's meeting. In accordance with the rules of city council, we ask that you would keep your comments to five minutes or less. With that, is there anyone who would like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? Yes, sir?
Thank you.
You can sign in afterward if you want, and go ahead, state your name and address, please.
My name is Forrest Dilly, I live at 412 West Wheeling Street here in Lancaster. I'm here again about the flood that happened about three weeks ago. The mayor was gracious enough to let us have free pickup of our waste and so on for two weeks. I understand that last Friday, there was a little bit of trouble with one of our neighbors, the gentleman didn't want to pick it up, but he talked him into it, so it's gone now, so... Excuse me. One of the things I have to say right now is that my wife was supposed to come tonight with me, but she's feeling poorly. We now have black mold growing in the basement, I've been ripping down panels and spraying it with bleach, trying to get it out of there. I don't know how long she's gonna be sick, or whatever. I was talking with the other, one of the other gentlemen here from the utilities, and we were comparing notes about the rainfall and so on that we've had, and why the flood may have happened, pumps may have failed, may have gotten too high on some of the CSOs on the other side of the river. I'm not sure what can be done about this unless we get something to clean out. I've only seen a vector truck in that, my neighborhood, maybe twice in the past year. I know that the lines get clogged, I know they get debris in them, I know that we have trouble with them, and one of the neighbors, we have been there for 46 years, and this has never happened to her. I'm hoping that the city can look into things, define things that will help us in this area. We've had water in the yard now, since, I know everybody is saying that the new jail didn't cause this, but since the jail was built, I'm, the previous five years I was here, I never had any water in the backyard. Since that jail's been built, I've had puddles in the backyard foot-deep or so, which still didn't get in the house. I've got security cameras in my house, one in the basement, that recorded the flood coming squirting through the door, it was just miserable, we're still cleaning. There's furniture, I had to take paneling off the wall, we've had so far that we figured about $12,000 in loss. Of the insurance company, we only cover $4,000, so we're out a bit of money. We still have, have to replace the freezer, all the food that we had in the freezer was gone. We thought the thing was still running, but four days later, when we opened it up, everything was stalled out. So, we've just been having a mess. I don't want to sound like a big complainer, I worked for the city of Seattle for nearly 20 years. I worked in the water, drainage, wastewater, and sewage. I know that we have problems in the city here with some of the drainage, and yes, we did have quite a bit of water in February, at over six inches according to my calculations, my weather station. It may be a bit, a little bit different than what is shown at Rising Park, or at, I'm sorry, the park, but I don't know what's gonna happen next. We got an estimate on a door to put on our basement to try to seal it better, because we had a wooden door, it took three days for me to get that door open, because it's swollen so much. A new steel door costs between $1,500 and $1,800, something that will seal out the water from coming in better. It still wouldn't stop a flood like this, I don't think. I'm just asking that the council and the city really look at ways that may be improving the drainage system in the area, whether road levels can be changed, manhole covers like on George and Mulberry can be fixed, because it's sticking out of the street six inches or better. I've watched people tear the oil pans off their cars going over that thing. So, that's more or less all I have to say, I'm really hoping to hear something that the city's gonna do about it. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dilly, thank you for being here tonight, I will just quickly note that in unfinished business this evening, we have asked for a presentation from Superintendent Nixon and Manager Cruz, and so if you can hang around till the end, you will have a presentation regarding this issue.
I'll definitely be here.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? Ms. Burnside?
I suspect that many of you have heard about the storage facilities that have been approved by Greenfield Township, the potential site of the property of Walter Beatty on the west corner of his property, which butts up to River Valley Highland. Approximately 2.41 acres, the storage facility consists of 20 to 25 areas for recreational vehicles, and 180... and a hundred-and-eighty-eight indoor units. The only way in to these facilities is through the neighborhood, noting that there are fifteen storage facilities already in the area nearby. I spoke with James, and I'm not sure if you pronounce it Mako or Maco, the Assistant Director of the Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission today, who was kind enough to send me the minutes of the meeting of December the fourth, where Mr. Beatty presented his proposal. And I listed, I read the listed attendees, and I recognized Kevin Yaman's name. It was at this meeting that the commission recommended disproving the zoning change for this property, for this project, and mentioned the reasons why. There was also a letter from the City Engineer Office, Mitch Nolan, also indicating that the zoning remained the same, denying what Mr. Beatty wanted to do. All those of this meeting took place in December of two thousand and eighteen. Mr. Mako told me that he was aware of the project as early as the summer of two thousand and eighteen. While I understand that this is a township issue in the county and not a city issue, the city has interacted in a number of ways negating this project, as mentioned in the above meeting, and is most likely as early as the summer of two thousand and eighteen. I spoke with Mr. Yaman, the name I recognized from the meeting, as he is the inspector for Greenfield Township. He inspected the property, and I spoke with him with regards to the passing for the zoning of this facility. And he told me that he sent letters to the property owners, there are two, and he placed the ads in the Ilguset as a required notification for the open meetings that were held for the public to attend regarding the zoning of the property. And per the minutes, there were no attendees but one couple. Per the open meetings of January the sixteenth, Mr. Yaman stated that he knew Mr. Beatty had been going through a lot with the city of Lancaster and the RPC, and he felt that the storage facility would be a good fit for the area. The city's still refusing water and sewage, and it's only eighty feet to the property. But Mr. Beatty was planning to put in a well and septic, and when asked about sprinklers, he stated that according to code and size, he didn't need to have them. Maintaining the street, who will maintain the street? Two trustees, two votes yes. However, after the fact, after finding out that this happened, there were many homeowners that would have attended those meetings, had they known. Had the stewards who were elected to have the safeguard of the interests of this neighborhood informed them, the notifications of the township outside the city would not have been on the radar of most citizens who reside within the city, unless they knew it would impact them. And apparently, city governing stewards did know, and for some time. They may not have known when these meetings would have taken place, but if they would have informed the citizens, we would have had it on our radar to have watched for them. And I know, I know, I can hear it now, River Valley Highlands again. But I'm not here for just River Valley Highlands. I'm here anytime an issue like this can come up on the outskirts of a neighborhood, Misty Meadows, the overlook, an older established neighborhood that can have a county township, that's township in the county that skirts up against them, and something can pop up and affect your home, your school, your property value. Just let those in your ward know about it before it happens, so that they can have their voice at those township meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burnside. Is there anyone else who would like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? Well, thank you each for being here tonight. Are there reports of standing committees?
There are two. Finance Committee meeting minutes for March eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, submitted by Mr. Stoughton. And economic development meeting minutes for January seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, submitted by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
We have a motion in the second to receive and file the reports of standing committees. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there reports of special committees?
There are none to be presented.
We have no public hearing scheduled tonight, so we'll move to the reading of resolutions, beginning with the second reading of Temporary Resolution Thirty-five dash nineteen.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an agreement with ODOT to purchase sodium chloride rock salt for the twenty-nineteen through twenty-twenty winter season, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mr. Schoonover.
Second of three readings, please.
Second reading on Temporary Resolution Thirty-five dash nineteen. Temporary Resolution Thirty-six dash nineteen.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to advertise for, select, and enter into a contract with qualified consultant for inspection of the twenty-nineteen street improvement programs, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution Thirty-six dash nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution Thirty-six dash nineteen. Mr. Schoonover.
As we spoke last meeting, this is really yearly part of the street program where we're hiring an outside inspector for our street paving program. So we're going to speed this along and ask for suspension.
Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes seven to zero. Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution Thirty-six dash nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution Thirty-six dash nineteen. Further discussion, Mr. Schoonover.
Yes, sir.
Other discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution Thirty-six dash nineteen passes seven to zero. Temporary Resolution Thirty-seven dash nineteen.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into an LPA federal local let project, agreement with the State of Ohio Department of Transportation for resurfacing of Fair Avenue from Memorial Drive to High Street, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution Thirty-seven nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution Thirty-seven dash nineteen. Discussion, Mr. Schoonover.
This, again, we discussed at the last meeting, but this is our STP funds through the state to work on the repaving of Fair Avenue from Memorial to High. And if anyone drives it as much as I do, we would greatly appreciate this, and we're asking for suspension to speed this up.
Thank you, Mr. Schoonover. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes seven to zero. Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution Thirty-seven nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution Thirty-seven dash nineteen. Mr. Schoonover, further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Other discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution Thirty-seven dash nineteen passes seven to zero. We now have first reading on a series of resolutions, beginning with Temporary Resolution Thirty-nine dash nineteen.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the Feder's Run Stream Restoration and Sanitary Improvement Project, offered by Mr. Woodard, second by Mr. Bous.
Mr. McDaniel.
Two readings.
First of two readings on Temporary Resolution Thirty-nine dash nineteen. Temporary Resolution Forty dash nineteen.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the sanitation fund, six-oh-five, and amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor, offered by Mrs. Bobbitt, second by Mrs. Teener.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Thank you. First of three readings.
First of three readings on Temporary Resolution Forty dash nineteen. Temporary Resolution Forty-one dash nineteen.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to waive competitive bidding for the Pioneer Alley Storm Sewer Replacement Project and to declare an emergency, offered by Mr. Woodard, second by Mr. Bous.
Mr. Bous? Or, I'm sorry, Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mr. President. First of two readings.
First of two readings on Temporary Resolution Forty-one dash nineteen. Temporary Resolution Forty-two dash nineteen.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the Mont Hank, Mont Hank Drive Culvert Replacement Project, sorry about that, offered by Mr. Woodard, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. McDaniel.
This will be the first of three readings.
First of three readings on Temporary Resolution Forty-two dash nineteen. Temporary Resolution Forty-three dash nineteen.
A resolution authorizing the waiver of Section Seven of the November first, two thousand and two agreement between the City of Lancaster and the Lancaster Area Community Improvement Corporation for infrastructure repayment to the city pursuant to the sale of approximately twenty acres of land in Rockwell Corporate Phase Park Phase Two for construction of projects GWN in furtherance of economic development, offered by Mr. McDaniel, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes, Mr. President. This is the item regarding Project GWN that we discussed in the executive session, and I'll be asking for suspension.
Very good. Did you make that motion, please?
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third readings of Resolution temporarily numbered forty-three dash nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution Forty-three dash nineteen. Further discussion, Mr. McDaniel?
I have none. I think that it was discussed pretty openly at the executive session and at what we could at finance.
Very good. Is there further discussion on the motion to suspend?
Mr. President, if I would, I would just want to, this is an exciting opportunity for the city, and I, that is why I'm recommending the suspension and moving forward with the opportunities it might, it might present.
Very good. Yes, it is time-sensitive, and so moving forward tonight is of the utmost importance. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes seven to zero. Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Resolution Forty-three dash nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution Forty-three dash nineteen. Further discussion, Mr. McDaniel?
I have none.
Other discussion around the table on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution Forty-three dash nineteen passes seven to zero. Temporary Resolution Forty-four dash nineteen.
A resolution to increase receipts appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Improvement Fund, three-one-seven, amend the certificate of other sources and appropriations with the county auditor, and issue a then-and-now, offered by Mr. Stoughton, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is really a, we're creating a revenue and expense account for potential monies that could be spent on this particular project. We don't expect that they will be, but the accounts are in place, as well as an executed then-and-now that will allow us to continue forward should we need to do so. It's more of a, you know, preparation piece than it is anything that's going to be actioned.
Very good.
The first of three readings.
First of three readings on Temporary Resolution Forty-four dash nineteen. Temporary Resolution Forty-five dash nineteen.
A resolution approving an application for placement of farmland in an agricultural district pursuant to the higher revised code nine-two-nine-point-zero-two, offered by Mr. Groff, second by Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. Groff?
This is the first of three readings.
First of three readings on Temporary Resolution Forty-five dash nineteen. I'll quickly note that there is a public hearing scheduled on this legislation on March twenty-fifth at six-thirty P.M. Temporary Resolution Forty-six dash nineteen.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Capital Improvement Fund, three-two-oh, and amend the certificate with the county auditor, offered by Mr. Stoughton, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of Resolution temporary forty-six nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution Forty-six dash nineteen. Discussion, Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is also the Project GWN, which is a significant economic development opportunity. This is appropriating monies that we can use to get started with infrastructure work that we need to do in anticipation of this, of this particular upcoming announcement. This money will be repaid by the developer once everything with Project GWN is public and open.
Thank you, Mr. Stoughton. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes seven to zero. Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Resolution temporary forty-six nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution Forty-six dash nineteen. Further discussion, Mr. Stoughton?
No, thank you.
Other discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution Forty-six dash nineteen passes seven to zero. There are further resolutions to come before Lancaster City Council this evening. Seeing none, we'll move to the reading of ordinances, beginning with the third reading of Temporary Ordinance four dash nineteen.
An ordinance to amend ordinance twenty-five dash eighteen, repeal and replace existing twenty-five dash eighteen, and declare an emergency for the non-union pay ordinance, offered by Mr. Stoughton, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Ordinance temporary four nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Ordinance four dash nineteen. Discussion, Mr. Stoughton.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is kind of a corrective piece specific to the the grant writer position, which was in the original pay ordinance, I believe. Is that the right one?
I believe so.
Yes. It has been removed since we're using contract services for that, so we're modifying the pay ordinance to reflect the actual paid positions in the city.
Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Ordinance four dash nineteen passes seven to zero. We now have first reading on Temporary Ordinance five dash nineteen.
An ordinance one, authorizing the City of Lancaster, Ohio, the city, to enter into an amendment to a natural gas supply agreement, a tax certificate or tax regulatory agreement, a bond purchase agreement, and a continuing disclosure agreement or commitment, all as necessary, and any and all other agreements that may be deemed necessary or appropriate, the agreements. Two, authorizing the use of certain financial and demographic information of the city in a preliminary official statement, and official statement and continuing disclosure in connection with the issuance of revenue bonds by the Lancaster Port Authority. And three, authorizing the payment of all necessary professional services related to the agreements, the preliminary official statement, and the official statement, all for the purpose of the purchase of distribution of natural gas by the city and related to the issuance of revenue bonds by the Lancaster Port Authority to assist the Lancaster with its acquisition of a supply of natural gas, including additional volumes for sale to the city and declaring an emergency, offered by Mr. Stoughton, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Might be a record.
I think it is. I was thinking the same.
Thank you, Randall.
Yes. Paid by the word. Thank you very much, Law Director. Very good. We have Mr. Stoughton, first reading on this.
Sorry?
I mean, this is our, discussion, please.
You want to do both sides of this?
Go for it. You do your thing. You're welcome.
Well, as much as I'd like to make this go three readings, so she can read it three times.
I know, that's what I said before.
I'm feeling the love.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of Ordinance temporary five nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Ordinance five dash nineteen. Discussion, Mr. Stoughton.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Many folks, you hear of the prepaid gas program that we have in the city. We're ten years into a thirty-year deal, and in the ten years, the prepaid gas is basically, you know, bundling our gas purchase over a long period of time and collecting a rebate for the city and for economic development. In the past ten years, the city has collected for economic development and a small piece for the general fund prior to two thousand and seventeen of about eight-point-four million dollars being in this program. Because we want to continue to leverage the amount of natural gas we have to purchase, because we own our own municipal gas system, we want to now basically take, keep the twenty years that we have remaining in our current agreement in place. We also want to add back that ten years to leverage an opportunity where the markets are favorable to Lancaster, to the point where we can actually bring in more money by adding those ten years back to the contract. So this is what this is doing today. So this is what this is doing today. We've talked about it a couple different times in finance, so the, we've been expecting this legislation, actually, two weeks ago as opposed to tonight, but this is basically a really good economic development tool that allows us to leverage our, our mass purchasing of natural gas, to use that to basically fund our activities in, you know, local economic development, some of which I'm certain helped with project GWN, which we've also talked about a little bit about tonight, and I know there's a lot of other opportunities in the pipeline as well. So that's my reason for suspension. We want to move quickly. The markets are very favorable, and again, council was briefed on this a couple different times.
A very succinct summation of a very complex thing. Thank you, Mr. Stoughton. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes seven to zero. Mr. Stoughton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion, the council pass and gross and enter upon the written record ordinance temporary five nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance five dash nineteen. Further discussion, Mr. Stoughton?
No, thank you.
Any discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Abstain.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary ordinance five dash nineteen passes six to zero with one abstention. We have no tabled legislation this evening, so we'll move on to unfinished business. We have asked that Superintendent Nixon and stormwater manager Cruz provide a presentation this evening and update city council and the public on the recent flooding issues in and around the city, and so thank you both for being here tonight, and we will turn the podium over to you.
He's getting her PowerPoint together. I'll get it started by saying, this is a complex issue. You have to meet the year, sanitary sewers, somewhat small, somewhat high, stormwater, runoff, groundwater, there's a lot of things to play into, make sure there's a better issue. I have to, I have certain people that's saturated in green, on green, or, or no problem. So again, it's always hard, there's never one common scenario, probably cause, be common water, so. With that, we'll let me start into her PowerPoint, and then we'll both be here.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Nixon. I'll just ask that if whichever of you's talking of, you can just get in front of that mic so the, the viewing public can hear as well. Thank you.
All right. West side flooding. This is Lancaster in eighteen eighty-nine. The Hocking ditch, as it was called at the time, is about in the center of the map. The canal is just above it, and the west side down to the river tracks is just below it. As you can see, there was some property platted along Main Street, but most of the area that we're talking about was not occupied. There was a reason. This is Lancaster nineteen thirty-eight. Again, you can see the Hocking River has been straightened, Miller Park has been developed, a little bit more housing south of the river, but the majority of the land south of the river was not occupied, and there was a reason. I've heard lots of people say it's never flooded before. In the upper right-hand corner is West Main in nineteen thirty-seven. Next to it is Miller Park in nineteen forty-five. Next to that is George Street in nineteen sixty-four. In the bottom is Pierce Avenue in nineteen forty-eight. Next to that is George Street in nineteen forty-five. And the last one was the earliest picture of flooding I could find, that's Cold Spring Hill. The area that's underwater is actually where the Plaza Shopping Center is now, and that was eighteen ninety. These are from the string gauges at Enterprise. This shows on the right the historic crest. You can see the highest they recorded was in nineteen oh seven, and down to nineteen seventy-five. Councilman Stoughton might remember the January fifth, two thousand and four flood. It was actually the first day of the stormwater utility, and it was the first day of him in office.
But it wasn't my fault.
On the left is the recent crest, the highest levels in recent years. As you can see, fifteen point seven seven feet on February thirteenth. So two floods this year, three in eighteen, three in seventeen, fifteen and sixteen, we didn't have any. So we were in a fairly low flood situation up until about seventeen, and then we started to see an increased number of floods. So you've probably seen this before, you've probably learned it in school, the water cycle. It rains, water comes down, it either infiltrates, it evaporates, it evaporotranspirates, or it runs off. So let's talk about the rainfall. Any way you look at it, we have had a lot of rain in the last three years. In fact, we've had some fairly rainy cycles over the past sixteen years. We've also had some very dry cycles. But as you can see, by any way, shape, or form, in eighteen, it was an extremely rainy year, nineteen is, is looking to be the same. That's okay, because we can evaporotranspirate, right? In central Ohio, peak evaporation, evapotranspiration is five point seven one inches in June, and we can count on thirty to thirty-five inches of evapotranspiration per year. Those come when, A, there's leaves on the trees, and it's warm, neither of which happened in February. In fact, when you look at the climate summary for central Ohio, in February, it's very cold, and we only have clear weather about forty percent of the time. So we're not going to see any evapotranspiration in February. In fact, we're not going to see any evaporation in February either. These are soil borings that were taken by the engineering, or for the engineering department in the area of West Main and Mulberry. This was part of the, the evaluation they were doing for roadway improvements in the area. When you look at the soil report, the first thing that you will notice is groundwater level at the site, as well as perched water tables, will fluctuate based on variations in rainfall, snowmelt, evaporation, surface runout, and other hydrogeologic factors. The table at the bottom shows the soil composition, and what you're seeing is a lot of peat. It's very organic, it doesn't drain well, and it holds water extremely well. This is one of the soil borings. As you can see, they encountered water at three feet, that's a W. The little downward pointing arrow is where the groundwater was, at six feet, and as you can see in the soil description, it's wet. This is another one of the soils. They did not hit groundwater at this, but as you can see in the description, damp, damp, and wet. So rainwater was not going to infiltrate into the soil. We've lost infiltration, we've lost evapotranspiration, and we've lost evaporation. The only thing left is runoff. So when dealing with runoff, there's three rules of physics that I cannot change as much as I try. Water runs downhill. The top left is taken at the bridge on Wheeling Street. At the bridge, the ground elevation is about eight twenty. The homes along West Wheeling sit somewhere between eight nineteen and eight eighteen. As you're standing here, you can see that down behind the houses, there's a significant drop in grade. The other two pictures are taken from the alley, and they show that the backyards are indeed extremely low, and these homes have walkout basements. This is the contour map. These are the two thousand and fifteen contours taken by the county. So they go from the highest points, are in the reds, down to the lowest points in the blue, so you can kind of see the gradient there. The river has a, a base of about eight oh five. The spoil piles have a top of bank of about eight eighteen, eight twenty. The homes along Wheeling are, as I said, somewhere between eight nineteen and eight eighteen, and you can see segments in the back that are at eight fourteen and eight twelve. All of those little green circles are eight twelves. Those are the lowest points in the neighborhood, and that's where water's going to flow, because water flows downhill. Water also seeks its own level. I can't change that either. In a special flood hazard area, there's two types of water. There's the floodway, that's the moving water, and there's the flood fringe that detains and stores excess water. You put those together, and you get a floodplain. This is the nineteen eighty-nine flood map. It was based on nineteen sixties contours from the USGS. The solid green area was the floodway, and the transparent yellow was the flood fringe. Under flood regulations, there, there could not be any development in the green area. So these homes predated this map. They were all grandfathered in, but they would not be here today. This is the twenty eighteen flood map, and as you can see, it's slif, it's shifted slightly. The old map stopped about Slocum. It shifted west a little bit to Welsh. The floodway, the yellow hatched area, has shrunk a lot, but all in all, the floodplain has pretty much stayed the same with that slight shift to the west.
Could you please go back, just to compare real quick? Thank you.
In addition, on the twenty eighteen flood maps, we have cross-sections, and these cross-sections identify where the one percent flood elevations are. So at Chestnut Street, the one percent flood elevation is eight sixteen point six. At Main Street, it's eight seventeen three. At Wheeling, it's eight seventeen eight, and up Union Street, it's eight eighteen two, and it continues to gradually rise as we go north. So again, in a FEMA-regulated flood hazard area, which we have, the finished floor elevation has to be elevated above the one hundred, or the one percent annual chance, what you used to know as the one hundred-year flood elevation. Finished floor elevation is based on the lowest occupied floor, so that would include your basement elevations. So again, remember, the houses on Wheeling have basement elevations that are about eight fourteen, down to eight twelve. So they're way below the one percent flood elevation. I had another thing there. So again, these houses would not be built without being elevated and without the area being filled. The last slide can't change is water takes a path of least resistance. Water is, is going to take less energy when it can, so paved surfaces versus grass. Pipes versus streets. I'm going to remind you, the elevations here, again, take a look at it, and, and you'll see the various elevations out there. These are the storm sewers that serve the near west side. The oldest one in this drawing is the Union Street. It was built nineteen thirty-nine when we were installing sewers around the city. The others were installed as part of the nineteen eighty-two, nineteen eighty-four near west side drainage improvements. To show the importance of this, this was the very first community development block grant program that we had. We received our first pile of money in nineteen eighty-two. It immediately went into this project. We spent about one point eight million on the project. In today's dollars, that would be close to four million dollars. We upgraded and installed storm sewers in the area. We rebuilt streets, eliminated some cross-connections with the sanitary sewers. These are the various sewer lines that were installed as part of that project. The yellow is the storm sewers, and as you can see, some of them have very, very small chimneys or catch basins. They're not very deep. That's because the green line is the ground elevation, and we can install storm sewers that stick up out of the ground. The blue line at the top is the flood elevation. That's eight seventeen. So you can see, in all cases, the blue line is above the green line. So the flood elevation is above the ground level in that area, and the river is always going to try and reach that elevation. Any stormwater and storm sewers is going to, have to overcome that head to get out into the, the river. And because water takes the path of last, of easiest resistance, it's easier to pop out of the manholes and the storm sewers than it is to try and overcome six feet ahead to get into the river. So what are not the issues related to west side flooding? Runoff from the jail did not cause flooding on the west side. As you can see from the topo, the jail sits quite a bit higher, they're at nine, or eight twenty and eight twenty-two. As part of the jail construction, they were required to comply with the city stormwater regulations and Ohio EPA regulations. They were required to put in detention, and they were required to put in water quality controls that control the discharge from the site. There is actually less impervious area at the jail now than before construction, so there is actually less runoff. The Wheeling Street sanitary sewer lift station did not cause flooding. The west side is served by separate sewers. The sanitary sewer lift station has no outlet or overflow to the river, and the sanitary sewer lift station was in operation as designed during the event. The Miller Park Water Plant does not cause flooding. We are still using the Miller Park Water Plant. In fact, we're pumping quite a bit of water out there. Eight hundred and twenty-four million gallons in twenty eighteen for an average production of two point two million gallons per day. On the right, you'll see a map from the nineteen ninety-three study. This was a capacity study that was done for the city by URS. It was looking at what the drawdown in the well field would be if we pumped the maximum amount. This is before the south well field was even under construction. What this map shows is, if we drew out every bit of water that we could from the Miller Park well field, the drawdown at the plant property would only be about two feet. So when you get to the west side, there is no appreciable drawdown on the water table at full capacity. So, so whether we pump or whether we don't, the water table on the west side is the same. It is not a combined sewer overflow issue. The city currently has nine, we call them the necessary nine, combined sewer overflows. They're all on the east side of the river. We have six on the Hocking River, two on Baldwin's Run, or I'm sorry, seven on the Hocking River, I always forget the plant, one on Baldwin's Run, and one on Hocking River, I always forget the plant, one on Baldwin's Run and one on Fetter's Run. Of the nine, we have already mitigated four of them to come in compliance with our Ohio EPA permit. Two are part of the 56 Forest Rose Project to be mitigated. So last time you asked, what's changed? Did we mention it rained a lot? It rained a lot. Did we mention there was more flooding? There was more flooding. So where are we spending our stormwater funds? We spend our stormwater funds on drainage projects. And since stormwater utility began in 2004, we've spent almost $50 million. That included 1.1 million in Hubert Rees, 300,000 in the Sheridan Hoffman areas. The Mulberry Street Relief Sewer on the east side was 700,000. Mulder Bar was 1.2 million. Seneca Pershing, that we just completed, was about 700,000. And the first phase of Union-Mulberry was 3.6 million. We have Ohio EPA mandated combined sewer overflow projects. We've spent almost $80 million on those since the 90s. That includes $10 million for improvements in the Lake Allen Maple area and the just-completed $2 million in the Cherokee Drive area. We are mandated to spend an additional $20 million over the next 15 years. We are looking at floodplains. We've spent almost $2 million, most of that grant funds, on floodplain projects. That includes the Baldwin Run Stream Restoration, which is the area south of Main Street to Lawrence Street. The Baldwin Run Stream Restoration, north of Main Street to the confluence with Fetter's Run. Fetter's Run Stream Restoration Project at Land Rico Park. The Deeds Wetland Restoration, the Hocking River Stream Restoration, which includes some all wetlands, and the Lawrence Street Wetlands Restoration. And I can tell you, in February and March and January and December and most of last year, the Lawrence Street Wetlands were full. In January and February, both Deeds and Hocking Wetlands were also full of water. So the question is, what can we do? The storm sewers that serve the west side have flap valves on them. Those are valves that close under high water conditions. They keep the river from backing up into the area. Flap valves do leak, so there is some backup as the river tries to equalize. We can change the flap valves up for duct bill valves. It's a marginal improvement because the duct bill valves will close completely. They won't leak. They also won't allow any water out. So there's a little bit more head that you have to get to push water through a duct bill valve. The only other option the city would have is to purchase the homes, demolish them, and restore the area as a floodplain. Using Uniform Relocation Act, which is a requirement in the state of Ohio, you can count on 150,000 to 200,000 per home to do that. The homeowners themselves can apply for a fill permit. They're allowed to fill their yards in the flood fringe, not in the floodway. And they can fill their yards to the flood elevation and keep the water off. They can also elevate their homes above the base flood elevation, which would mean if you have a basement, that would be eliminating that, elevating your home, put your parking underneath it. So is there any questions?
Is that the end of your presentation, that we can turn this off?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe hit the lights, Mr. Stotin. Are there any questions for what was a comprehensive look at our stormwater process? Mr. Graff?
Can we be sent a copy of this?
We sure can, yes. If you wouldn't mind to send it to the clerk, we'll put it on the website.
It is on the stormwater webpage, on our front page.
The whole presentation?
The whole presentation. It's too big for me to send to Teresa. I tried.
Okay. Mr. Stotin, are we at a nightclub? What's going on back here? Mr. Cometti's in the back, I see, and he just ran out the door. We're getting close. Nope, 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 nope.
The silver one.
The silver one. Mr. Stotin, turn those other ones back. No, leave that one there. There you are. At least we're in the light, okay. All right, so it's too large to send, but the clerk also said she could print it, Mr. Graff. So if you or anyone else would like a printed copy of it, the clerk can do that, but it is on the website.
Yes.
It'll also be added as amendment to the minutes for this evening. Further questions for Ms. Cruz? Yes, Mr. Dow.
So as part of my earlier question about your preventative maintenance, with these stormwater sewers, where does that fall? Because they, they're 37 years old, if I calculated about as long as I've been out of high school. When you'd had the project and spent all that money to put them in, when is the last time that they were inspected to make sure that they were flowing properly?
Maintenance falls under LDOT, so I'm not sure I can give you a complete answer. I will tell you that when we get a complaint, LDOT does go out and they've looked at them. They do catch basin cleaning as needed. And they have done some repairs on the end walls at the stream.
Okay. So can we get some more information from LDOT on?
I will say that we've had some other sinkholes that they've been able to repair themselves. We had one on Memorial Tribe, right in front of a burger shop right there, if you remember that last year. This is the first one I've seen where it's been a kind of a long line of collapsing. So when they do see those, they do a little more investigation. Even have our superintendent, he was telling me about him walking, a whole line was so big, he could walk into it. Maybe drive a Volkswagen through it. So, but when it's smaller, we do try to get a camera down there. I will say this, as old as our city is, there's obviously going to be some lines that could be repaired. I know this, and I hear just even last week, some other cities that don't have the funding, haven't put the resources in like I think we have. I think we're doing better than other communities, but when you look at something that's 80 years old, 120 years old, there's probably more, but it all comes down to how much money do we have?
Well, and I think we just would like to have the information of, you know, what's the plan? Because, you know, everybody talks about three and five-year plans. We have sewer lines that are very, very old. Denise talked about, you know, their preventative maintenance program, and unfortunately, they've been more reactive than proactive because they're in that situation. So just going forward, understanding that it does take money, what's the plan? That's all I'm asking.
So if, yeah, someone could get back with us regarding that information, I think that'd be helpful as we continue forward. That's what you're asking, right?
Yeah.
Not financial help, but the information be sent off?
Yeah, absolutely.
Very good. Further questions? Yes, Ms. Teen?
I just have a couple things. So it's LDOT, so the stormwater doesn't go in and do any of this as?
LDOT receives funding from the stormwater for the storm sewer maintenance program. So when I say LDOT does it, they do it under funding from the stormwater program. And then they bill me for their hours.
Okay. Because you have, what, eight of their employees or something like that? Or seven or eight or something like that, however?
It's roughly five, but they bill me for hours.
Okay. So the other thing is, so with your, is, I know we're talking about what you had said, but is there like a schedule that they go out here and there? And I mean, I know there's this maintenance, but is there like a schedule they go by? Like, you know, they're on this side when they do the drains, certain times? There's no schedule at all?
No. Like I said earlier on the Pioneer Alley, we're still, we're still going from area to area as problems pop up. And it's not as bad as in 2004 when we were coming to council going, we're going to have to close this street. I mean, we have progressed from emergency to crisis. And so the plan is, within the next five years, to get onto preventative maintenance. But again, it's a matter of funding and manpower.
And I know it's great to have development and build, you know, they, out on West Fair, they're building some developments. Is building going, if we can't get a lot of these places fixed and that, people just keep connecting on? I mean, is that going to worsen things? Like out at River Valley Highlands, you know, there's so much have been built out there, it's?
All right. So you have to remember, under the stormwater regulations, both ours and the state, new development has to provide detention or retention. So there is less water coming off River Valley Highlands than when it was a farm field. And the developments out on West Fair, they're all required to detain from the hundred-year pre-development or post-development, sorry. The hundred-year post-development to the two-year pre-development. They have to hold that water and release it slowly under our regulations. So new developments, be it commercial, be it industrial, be it residential, all have to follow that. So we're getting less runoff from new developments than we are from the existing developments.
Thank you. Mr. Schoonover?
Let me read my chicken scratch. The reasons for shrinking floodways, so I was trying, I was having a hard time with the two.
The two maps?
The two maps. So the floodway looked a lot smaller on the second one, I think Mr. Stotin went back to it. So the floodway is essentially the river? Basically?
More or less, yes. For your understanding. So the reason that the actual floodway shrunk was the 1989 maps were based off of 1960 USGS maps. And the floodway is, by FEMA, assumes that the entire flood fringe gets filled up. So they assume there's no storage over on the sides. We got much better topographic information. Those, the 2012 maps were based on 2009 topographic information done by the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. So we got much better lines. They remodeled a portion of the Hocking based on work that was done by the Hunter's Conservancy District. And the Hunter's Conservancy District dams lowered the flood elevation in the city by half a foot. So by the time they did a new 21st century model and got better topo, they were able to narrow the floodway. But like I said, it adjusted the flood fringe, the side areas.
Okay. So just as a, I guess, rough comparison, so like the Fetter's Run Project that was done at Land Rico Park?
Yes.
The point of that project was what?
That was a stream restoration and floodplain project. So what we did was we redesigned the stream to carry a hundred-year flood.
Right.
And we stabilized all the banks. So we created what's called a two-stage stream.
Right. Is that something like that possible to do along the Hocking to potentially mitigate some of the issues or no? I'm just shooting them out there, I don't know.
It would be very complicated. And the existing Hocking does contain the hundred-year. You saw that in the floodway. So what you've got on the sides is what's being stored to come into the river later.
Okay.
Further questions? Yes, Mr. McDaniel?
I kind of want to summarize what I think I'm hearing from you. Essentially, we started our stormwater utility back in 2004 and we're still catching up. Is that what you're saying? We haven't caught up yet, so we're not ready yet for the preventive maintenance portion of what we hope to achieve here in the next few years?
That's correct. Prior to, prior to 2004, and this was one of the reasons we formed the utility, was all the stormwater program came from the general fund. So when there was no general fund money for it and to do the South Broad Project, we had to borrow $2 million from, by the general fund to do that project, to finish the downtown project, which we borrowed money for. So one of the things the stormwater utility did was provided a dedicated funding source so we could do maintenance, so we could do capital improvements. So yet, 16 years, like I said, we've moved from emergencies to crisis.
So it has gotten better. I mean, I think realistically, we're never going to quote "catch up," but we might have an opportunity to do some preventive maintenance in the future with the funds coming through stormwater. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then one more question, Mr. President. You mentioned the valves, the flap valve and the duct bill valve. Is that, is that something we should look at exploring and will it achieve any results?
We are looking at those. Like I said, a duct bill will not leak, which flap valves do. They just, they do. So we would prevent some leakage back into the system. That's going to be mitigated by the fact that we won't get any flow out of the system. It's going to be harder under high-flow conditions to get flow through a duct bill valve. It's kind of a toss-up, but we are looking at doing that when Greg can get some people in the river.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. Yes, Ms. Bobbitt?
So just to follow up on that, so the duct bills might not, or when you have them, then you won't have the leakage coming out, but it's not going to be able to take the water away either.
Correct.
So you're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't.
Right.
Another question that I have then. There's an empty lot on Wheeling Street. If I were to buy that now, would you make me make that elevation up to 820 feet?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bobbitt. Anyone else have questions this evening? Okay, I want to go back to Ms. Teener if there's anyone who hasn't had a question yet before I head back.
Actually, it's for you. The question's actually for you. So people that are here tonight, are they able to ask questions at all during this presentation?
No, not at this time.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm confident if I saw some interaction before the meeting, I'm sure they'd be more than willing to stay after the meeting and discuss if there were any questions from the audience. Further questions? Well, Mr. Nixon, Ms. Cruz, thank you both for being here. Thank you for a comprehensive presentation of where we've been and where we are. We certainly appreciate that. Is there other unfinished business this evening? Hearing done, is there new business tonight? Mr. Schoonover?
Just real quick, I just wanted to address Ms. Burnside when she came up, her, what she was discussing. I can't speak for anyone else, but I had never heard anything about that project, so I don't, I don't know if she was referring to all of us, but I had not heard anything about that project.
Thank you, Mr. Schoonover. Further new business this evening? I'll just mention very briefly, I had sent an email, but congratulations to the mayor and to each one of the department heads that presented during the State of the City. It was a phenomenal presentation. I had multiple people who told me that they attend regular presentations like this in other communities and they hadn't seen one so well put together. So congratulations to you and to each one who presented again, and thank you for the high-quality work that you did that day. Further new business? If not, will please read our upcoming meetings.
Next regular session of council, March 25th at 6:30 at that here, at that meeting. We'll have a public hearing on temporary resolution 45-19. The meeting after is April 8th at 6:30 PM. Upcoming committee meetings. The Safety Committee meeting for March 13th has been canceled. Water Water Pollution Control, March 20th at 7:00 AM at the Water Water Pollution Control Conference Room. Economic Development, March 21st at 7:30 AM at the City Hall Basement Conference Room. Finance, March 25th, 6:00 PM here in Council Chambers. Code Enforcement, April 1st at 7:30 AM at the basement of City Hall in the conference room. IT Telecom, April 4th at 7:30 AM at the Annex Building Conference Room. Finance Committee, April 8th here at 6:00 PM in Council Chambers. And finally, Law Committee, April 10th at 9:00 AM at the Fairfield County Municipal Court Community Room.
Thank you very much. Are there any bills this evening?
There's one bill to lift off LLC, $2,400. It is for the Office 365 Plan for one year for 10 licenses for all city council members to have an actual city email address.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Is there a need for an executive session? Seeing not, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Please remember to sign your legislation.